Thank you all for coming up this afternoon for today's meeting. The meeting is now called to order. Let the record show that Councilmember Cobb and Councilmember Adams are not present. We will have invocation by Mr. Moore. By Ms. Moore, and we will have the Pledge of Allegiance by Mayor Protem Gonzalez. Please stand.
Would you all bow your heads? Heavenly Father in the mighty name of Jesus, how excellent is your name in all the earth, who have set your glory above the heavens. Angels bow before you, heaven and earth adore you. Holy, holy, holy is the Lord God Almighty, the one who always was, who is, and who is still to come. Heavenly Father, we acknowledge that we are human, not perfect people, and carry brokenness within us. We have used our tongues to tear down rather than build up. Father, have mercy on us and forgive us of our sins. Help us to turn away from these evil ways and to reflect more like your son, Jesus Christ. Lord, we thank you for protecting those who trust in your name. We thank you for safeguarding our minds and shielding us from the deadly diseases, dangerous situations, and unseen threats. We honor and thank you for the leaders of this city whom you have chosen. Let us honor the hard work of our mayor, city council member, city secretary, city attorney, chief police, fire department, showing them great respect and wholehearted love, their efforts to help us to live peacefully with each other, ensuring that no one pays back evil for evil, but that we always strive to do good to one another and to all. Now, Father, as I come to close and seal this prayer, hear the voice of your servants standing in the gap. Father, I ask that the time that has been lost for this city to move forward be redeemed, for it is written in Ephesians 5 and 16. Make the most of every opportunity in these evil days. Father, I ask that you bestow upon your leaders a new level of wisdom and strength like never before. Let this wisdom remind them to be wise as serpent and gentle as a dove. Thank you, Father, for this opportunity to pray before your people. Let your kingdom come and your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. In Christ Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ma'am, for your prayer. Thank you, Mayor Protem, for the pledge of allegiance. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I make motion to approve the agenda.
Councilmember Boyd.
Second.
All in favor, yes; all opposed, no. Motion carries five to zero. Madam Secretary, presentation.
PR 25001, Colleen Star Award.
Once again, good afternoon, everyone. It's indeed an honor and pleasure to stand before you as we get ready to present the Star Award. The Star Award for this month will be presented by Mayor Protem. The individuals that do receive this awards or this award are individuals within our community that take the time and effort and go back and volunteer to give back to others. And that is this motto for this city. Our diversity, to me, is our strength. And now that we are future focus on making Colleen a better place, this award will mean a lot kicking off 2025, and we hope, especially for our citizen academy students here, that once you complete that course, that you would too get involved with what's going on in the city and be a better person with us to make change within our community. Thank you. Council, Mayor Protem.
Thank you all. Just a quick note before I tell you about the gentleman that's receiving this honor tonight. When we put out a community call to action, it's a very important call because no one person can do it alone. Change happens collectively, and whatever way you can contribute to that change for the good of our community and for our citizens within it, it is important that we all figure out what our place is and we act upon it. And so when we put out a call to action for the development of our town, for the reinvestment in jobs and things along that nature, it's very empowering to me to know that there are people every single day heeding that call respectively. So I just want to say thank you to everyone out there that's doing their part. But the recipient of the Star Award today is Mr. Jonathan Malamed. Jonathan is a U.S. Army veteran, a successful entrepreneur, and he is dedicated to advancing and uplifting the city of Colleen, Texas. After serving as a sniper in the 1st Ranger Battalion during the Global War on Terror, Jonathan transitioned from military service to business ownership, establishing a thriving apparel printing company that proudly employs disabled veterans. Under his leadership, the company fulfills orders for over 90 businesses nationwide, countless military units on Fort Cavasos, and he contributes significantly to the local economy. In addition to his business achievements, though, Mr. Malamed has founded the Suicide Prevention and Intercation Network, SPIN, excuse me if I said that incorrectly, a nonprofit organization that was dedicated to combating veteran suicide and providing critical support to those in need. This mission stems from his personal experiences and deep commitment to supporting his fellow veterans, ensuring that they had access to all of the resources and community care that was out there for them. Mr. Malamed also has become a driving force behind the revitalization for Colleen's historic downtown area. Through his strategic investments, renovations, and preparations of spaces for lease, he hopes to create a vibrant and thriving center for our community as a whole. His efforts are not just about economic growth, but also inspiring others to believe in Colleen's potential and join in in creating a brighter future for our city. His contributions to Colleen through his business, nonprofit work, giving back to the veterans, and downtown investment serve as a testament of the power of vision, hard work, and commitment to fostering positive change. His hope is that these efforts will leave a lasting impact and encourage others to reinvest in the community's future. Thank you for all that you have done and all that you are doing for our community, and especially for the veterans within it.
Thank you, obviously, City of Colleen, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. But obviously, I want to say thanks to my wife, my kids, most of my employees, you know, some of them. But I think the, I think the big summary here is what was addressed in the speech was reinvesting in downtown Colleen and reinvesting in our community and trying to make Colleen a really a great place for everyone to enjoy. I know my employees, you know, they work downtown every day. There's a lack of food and restaurants and additional things to do, so hopefully we can change that, and hopefully I invite everybody to uplift our neighbors and our community and do something great. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, thank you. That was a award well deserved, and that's what it's all about, giving back to the community. Thank you for that. Let the record show that Councilwoman Cobb is here. We would discuss Agenda Items 2 through 10 for the January 21, 2025 regular session. No final action until the regular session. That means we will not vote until the regular session and after we have heard from the residents. Madam Secretary.
MN 25003, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of January 7, 2025. RS 25009, consider a memorandum resolution awarding RFP 2503, consultant for city park facilities sponsorship agreements, to Sportsman Solutions, who will receive a flat commission fee for all phases of the project, including asset inventory, evaluation, market study, sales execution, and fulfillment.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Murphy.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, distinguished members of the council. It's my pleasure to come before you. I ask that you give me a little grace and bear with me. This tropical summer that we're having has put a little tingle in my throat, so it may sound a little frogish, but we're gonna get through it, okay? Parks and Recreation issued RFP 25-03, consultant for city park facilities and sponsorships on October 7, 2024. The scope of services include having a consultant evaluate the city's facilities to estimate their naming or presenting right values and document the methodology used for these estimates. They would recommend strategies to maximize revenues and other benefits, develop strategic marketing plans, create a perspective list, and a timeline for marketing and negotiating naming rights. Sportsman Solution and clients will share, oh, sorry, I went a little too fast. They would assist in drafting necessary documents for implementation. Additionally, they would execute a marketing plan and reach out to potential clients. All agreements proposed by Sportsman Solutions will be submitted for a vote and approval by city council. Three proposals were received, one from Instagold, one from Sportsman Solutions, and the Superlative Group. Sportsman Solutions ranked the highest evaluated vendor. Sportsman Solutions and clients will share gross revenue as follows: 20% gross commissions due to Sportsman Solutions, 80% gross commissions due to the city of Colleen. The pictures that state are a few of the opportunities that we have to provide naming rights for a few of our facilities in our inventory, the athletic complex, Conda Park, the Family Recreation Center, the Family Aquatic Center. It is staff's recommendation awarding RFP 25-03 to Sportsman Solution over the course of up to three years and a flat fee commission gross revenue, 20% due to Sportsman Solutions, and 80% gross commissions due to the city of Colleen for all phases of the project, including asset inventory, evaluation, market study, sales execution, and fulfillment of city park facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. And one of the things that I'm going to ask all staff moving forward in 2025 is how does this benefit the city and residents?
To answer your question, Madam Mayor, it's the perfect timing. This is one of the ways we can engage public-private partnership to infuse our Parks and Recreation Department to improve some facilities and help develop more facilities. The revenue that would be coming from these potential opportunities could be applied back to make major renovations and still foster that sense of community.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, Mr. Murphy. Thank you for your presentation. I'm glad to see the city positioning itself to take advantage of such opportunities. This is actually something I proposed during a parks discussion last year as an opportunity to fund park projects, brand assets, and increase revenue. A couple of questions. Can you speak to why this is a good time to engage this project?
The first question, sir, is perfect timing. The city of Colleen is experiencing unprecedented growth with people moving here, looking to establish community and make this a long-lasting home. We're bringing in a lot of new businesses. We want to revive communities and reengage. So the opportunity to build public-private partnerships with a subject matter expert who can guide us along the way is a perfect opportunity.
Outstanding. Second question, what does this type of program look like in other communities that have this activated?
Sir, from the very layman's terms, it can reengage community. As the neighborhoods grow and they need park spaces, this public-private partnership allows funds to infuse, to develop parks on a major scale. It could be the generator or catalyst to launch sports, amateur sports tourism in the area, which will bring about revenue, help businesses grow, and help all of us prosper.
Very good. I notice the presentation states, "The scope of service includes having a consultant evaluate the city's facilities to estimate their naming or presenting of right values and document the methodology used for these estimates." Is a consultant indeed going to also evaluate all the city facilities?
My understanding is yes, sir, except for the ones that have historical naming, like Lions Club Park. We're not looking to change things that have established names, but any facilities that have a generic name and have some marketability or value to have buy-in, those are the facilities we would be looking at.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. Councilmember Segar.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, do you have an estimate of how much revenue that would generate each one of them or separately or whatever?
I don't have a legitimate estimate because we're under the fact finding. I've seen in other places for just recreational sports complex that can host regional tournaments, it can generate anywhere from $50,000 to probably $100,000, just based on size and scope. There are a few in lifetime of the naming rights that would go with it would dictate pricing, level of sponsorship, level of engagement, but you could roughly say $50,000 as a base.
Yeah, and I know we don't have a lot of unanswered questions yet because we're too early, but yeah, based on, you know, how many people go out there, I'm sure that's part of the marketing strategy. When somebody wants to have that naming right, they're gonna want to look at, you know, how many, how much traffic eaten out there? What'll that do to their business? So there's still a lot of stuff there. The other thing is, is this something you mentioned right there? You said a lifetime. Are we looking at if somebody does a naming right, make it for a lifetime, or is there a time period or?
It would be a time period, sir, based on the level of engagement. But I also want to address one thing that you said in the comments. With the naming rights opportunity, a lot of its businesses are already vested in our community and are gonna be here for the long haul. So that's where we look into those long-term naming rights. Just as an example, let's say we do the PennFed Credit Union, which has a staple with the military. If they invest in area in the community as a business and a service already, they're looking to be a community partner and have that longstanding relationship.
Yeah. I think it's great. I think it's a smart idea, and I appreciate you bringing it forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Murphy, when you mentioned about generic sites, for example, that would be like the, not the Lions Park, but the Water Park over there. That would be, you have any other examples that?
The Family Aquatic Center, Family Recreation Center, the Colleen Athletic Facility Fields, which are located right here off of WS Young. Those are just some of the larger facilities that we have that offer the opportunity.
And also, have you, I know Councilmember Boyd mentioned this about seeing this in other municipals. Have you seen this?
Yes, sir. I've seen it both in small towns and major cities that I've been, had the pleasure of service in. In small towns where they wanted to foster a sense of community, those established businesses and locals who wanted to be truly invested have gotten on board and helped develop parks, helped do community bills. To the foreign, when you're naming rights, bringing in regional tourship, increasing their brand identity, so they bought in at that level on major cities, and you see it all across with the promotional sports tourism working hand in hand.
I think it's great. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Murphy, just a follow-up question with you. And for instance, over at the Water Park, one of our rec centers, is it possible if a company decide that they want their name on a particular building, would they sponsor some of our events for our youth or seniors?
That could be well put into negotiations, developing that agreement, right? Or a level of sponsorship that would engage fostering program development as well. It's up to you all, and like I said, when this company brings back those recommendations, they will have whatever elements that we desire to see fit as well, and we'll go, we'll decide on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you, because I think one of the things on partnership, not only putting your name, I think Carson Law Firm has done a great job in sponsoring a lot of our downtown events. To me, that's community engagement. That's community involvement, and that's the partnership. Giving back both ways. Okay, thank you. Great job. Great job. Madam Secretary.
RS 25010, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the procurement of computer hardware from GTS Technology Solutions in the amount of $209,795.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Resto. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. I know the hair messes you all up.
I know. I had to do a second look. Look up again.
I decided to grow it back.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Sorry, bud. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm going to be discussing the purchase of computer hardware. A little bit of background, the city of Colleen currently have about 1,167 PCs. 714 of those are close to or have exceeded their lifespan. Computers are beyond five years of age or no longer covered under warranty. We begin to see slow performance decreases and become unsupported by hardware and software companies. And as everybody knows, that Windows 10 is going away December of this year, so that's another motivation for moving from Windows 10 and upgrading to our Windows 11 platform. The Computer Replacement Program is an effort to reduce the dependency and inclination to persons to latest by carefully planning our needs for computer resources, standardization of desktop computing environments. Additionally, we want to ensure each staff member who uses computing resources have access to computers that sufficiently, efficient capabilities to support basic computing needs in fulfillment of their work responsibilities. The Information Technology Department recommends a 10% PC replacement each year to remain in compliance, and this is something that we put in our line item budget every year. Staff intends to purchase the equipment from GTS Technologies through the State of Texas Department of Information Resources in the amount of $209,794.20. And our recommendation, staff recommendation, is that the city manager is designated be authorized to execute the purchase of the computer equipment from GTS Technology Solutions, a value-added reseller through the State of Texas Department of Information Resources in the amount of $209,794.20. And I'm available to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you. There are no questions of you. Thank you. Madam Secretary.
RS 24011, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing an agreement with Jamal and Smith Construction LP for the maintenance and repairs of the transfer station tunnel in the amount of $882,114.74.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Zegars.
Good afternoon, Mayor and fellow council members. We're here to authorize the agreement for Jamal Smith Construction LP, and this is for the transfer station, the tunnel project. In fiscal year 2023, there was a capital improvement project that included, that included this project. There was repairs and upgrades to the tunnel system that we have and loading pit over there at the transfer station. The city council at the time, in January 3 of '23, authorized a design contract with Fries and Nichols for this work. We did try to bid. We had the design completed, and we bid the project actually twice, September 12 of '24, and then May of, May of '24, and then September of '24. We didn't, we were unsuccessful. We didn't receive any bids, and so we've been working with the designer, and then we went to the next slide, and we went out to buy board with a contractor that has done work in the city to try to get a good proposal by them in order to perform this work. We worked with Jamal Smith with negotiations, looking over the design, seeing what we can do to get a good price, and he came back with $882,114.74. And then this project is also being funded through our Solid Waste CIP. The repair, what it is, is this kind of pictures of what we have right now in one of the tunnels. You have the loaders push all the trash, they kind of put in this opening, and it drops down into the trucks, the semis that are underneath on the scales. You can see in these pictures, there's these steel plates that are surrounding the opening, and you have this crane that helps move and push that trash into those trucks. Throughout the years, and this is actually, it's been repaired once, this is the second time we're looking at it, those plates are warping, they get beat up by that crane, they get beat up by the loaders, and the trash gets stuck, so we ended up putting a lot of wear and tear onto those cranes, and then trying to get that stuff efficiently into those, those semis that are waiting below. There's some concrete underneath, the second picture's kind of underneath, you're seeing some spalling, you're seeing some damage getting done to the concrete itself. And what we're planning on doing with the repair is instead of being in a vertical shaft type of thing, we're gonna pull back one side, make it with a 45-degree angle, so it's more, gonna be more of a funnel effect to actually get the trash a little more efficient off the floor into those trucks with a little less work with those cranes and help use gravity as our friend on that one. So, staff, we recommend that the city council authorize the execution of the agreement with Jamal and Smith Construction LP for the transfer station. Actually, it's not the push wall repair, this is the tunnel project in the amount of $882,114.74. And also to have Jason Hanchi in here in the audience, if you have any questions in regard to this or anything else on the transfer station.
Thank you, Mr. Zegars. There are no questions for you.
Okay.
Madam Secretary.
RS 25012, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding between the city of Colleen and Workforce Solutions of Central Texas to implement a temporary job placement program.
Thank you. Mrs. Wilson, good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The Disaster Relief and Workforce Reentry Program is a federal grant managed by the Texas Workforce Commission. Workforce Solutions of Central Texas is receiving $400,000 of that grant to distribute among a few different focus areas. Workforce Solutions is seeking partner agencies to provide temporary employment opportunities for meaningful work experience and reemployment training for second chance individuals. This program will offer short-term job readiness support and connections with an opportunity to hire for long-term employment. Through the grant, Workforce Solutions will pay the salary for the internship, cover workers' compensation costs, liability insurance, and provide background checks. Workforce Solutions will also provide any necessary safety equipment, gear, along with any preliminary safety training. Per the program, the city will provide two-week internship positions totaling 80 hours. The city will complete our own background check to ensure that our standard city requirements are still followed. Approved interns will work on project-based opportunities supervised and trained by existing city staff. Staff recommends city council authorize entering into the memorandum of understanding with Workforce Solutions of Central Texas to implement a temporary job placement program. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and additionally, we have Jared Porrit, the Director of Operations and Strategy for Workforce Solutions of Central Texas, here to answer any questions you may have for him.
Thank you. I just think that this is a really good program and extremely important partnership with workforce. Thank you. I just think that this is a really good program and extremely important partnership with Workforce Solution, giving individuals a second chance and learning job skills. I'm looking forward to this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
RS 25013, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the execution of a land purchase agreement with Bright Speed of Texas Inc. for the Highway 195 ground storage tank project.
Thank you. Welcome back, Mr. Zegars.
Thank you again, Mayor and council members. So I'm here to authorize execution of a land purchase for an agreement with Bright Speed. As mentioned, this is in regard to our water tank construction that's off of Highway 195. And the new location is Tower Hill, Tower Hill Lane. I think if you recall, when we were first starting the project, we were looking on the west side of 195, which is where Texas A&amp;M, we were looking at that hill. That was turning out to be a little more difficult dealing with negotiations, dealing with the base. So then we looked and turned to the other side of 195 to the right, which is where Tower Hill Lane is. Currently, we own a small tract of land. There's two small tanks up there right now. Those are actually not being, they're not functional right now. They're just sitting up there. What we want to do is use that property. Plus, we had to buy some additional property around that lot so we can fit a bigger tank. And we're looking at putting a larger tank of a one and a half million gallon tank up in that location and also use the rest of the land to kind of reserve it for later. So we have to add another tank in the future. This, this tank will add pressure to the upper pressure plane. So some storage, but also a help with the pressure balancing of that area. And then Bright Speed owns the, currently the two lots. If you read the appraisal, they said there were three lots, but it's really two lots. There's a long little slender access on the west side. That's part of, I think, the first larger lot. So really, there's only two tracts of land or two lots that we're looking at purchasing from Bright Speed. City, now the city staff, we did hire appraisal, appraiser to get this land appraised so we can offer a fair, marketable offer. We offered $73,000 to Bright Speed for the purchase of that land. They did agree to it. And then that's why we're here now for the agreement to authorize the signature and purchase of that property. Recommendation is to authorize the execution of the land purchase agreement with Bright Speed for that property off of Highway 195 for the ground storage tank project in the amount of $73,000. And if you have any more questions, I also have Steve Kanye, the Assistant City Engineer, who's been working with this project here in the audience.
Thank you for that, Mr. Zegars. How does this benefit the city and our residents?
So this, obviously, we need to work with our water system and our upper pressure plane. Having that tank helps solidify that pressure in that area, provides a little bit of storage for that upper pressure plane, especially for the growth on the west side and in that area along 195.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cobb.
Good evening, Mr. Zegars. How are you?
I'm doing great. How are you?
Doing well. How many acres was that?
I will defer that to Steve. It wasn't a whole lot. So. It basically is right at one acre.
Thank you.
Councilmember Board.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a question in regards to the 1.5 million gallon storage tank for the future. How soon is the city projected to establish that tank at that location?
Right now, we have the design. So with the future bond sale that we're looking at doing later this, sooner than, you know, the part of this year, we'll have the funding to actually construct this thing. So once we get funding, we'll have it under construction.
Understood. Can you talk a little bit about the need for a secondary state tank similar to that location?
Defer that to Steve.
Thank you.
Sure. The, the main reason that we need extra elevated storage tank is the master plan. One of the things that the TCQ requires is, is 200 gallons per connection that you have in storage that's elevated. Again, elevated is there to, to be able to provide pressure on the system as well as, most importantly, fire protection and, and for safety. So we were kind of hitting close to that, that level where we needed to get extra elevated storage tank. So that's what, that's what's driving this whole project.
Sure. And you're saying in the future, it's going to cause a need for an additional state tank next to it?
The master plan talks about that in the, in 10, 20 years from now. Way, way out.
Understood.
Need another.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Board. So Mr. Zegars, either one of you, we're expecting a lot of growth in that area.
It's dealing with the existing growth and obviously the, the growth that we're projecting in the next few years. Yes.
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Cobb.
Sir, so we could be pleased to say that if we needed another tank, we could put it on that one acre of land, it would hold it.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Council, Mayor Protem Gonzalez.
Thank you. Just a general question. I know we mentioned that tank is further out. Mr. Kanye, is there, is the, the funding mechanism for that for future growth and development? Can you kind of touch on that a little bit as far as what our, our plan is to be able to work towards that?
Sure. Is, is, you know, again, the ten, are you talking about the second tank?
Yes, sir.
Eventually. As, as we continue on and that growth continues to happen and we will, we'll see this in future master plans as they look and they look again at that capacity. We'll, we'll again get closer and closer to that point where we have to get another million and a half gallon tanks in that, in the upper pressure plane. So that will kind of drive then a, a future project for a future tank. If we do the way that we've, we've done in the past, a lot of times then through the master plan, those projects will then be the foundation for going out for a bond. One of the other things though too is that we have in, in place now as a funding mechanism is impact fees. So for these growth related projects, those will be, that's another funding source that we'll be able to, to utilize in the future.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. Madam Secretary.
RS 25014, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of an addendum number one to amended and restated waste disposal contract between Bell County Water Control and Improvement District Number One and the city of Colleen, Texas.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Ms. Tangalain.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. The item I'm presenting is to restate and amended WCID number one agreement, addendum number one. Some background, in 1968, the city of Colleen entered into waste disposal contract with WCID for the treatment of the city wastewater. Over the years, this contract has been amended for various reasons. The last amendment was effective on December 14, 2023. On November 5th of 2024, the council received a tour of the 38 street wastewater plant where upcoming improvements to enhance water quality, reliability, and safety were discussed. Completion is expected by the end of, of 2026. And I believe at the same day, Mr. Garrett came in and did a presentation also. Addendum number one modifies the restated and amended waste disposal contract specifically for section 22 dated September 14, 2023. In the WCID, the city have agreed to present addendum number one to address the allocation of debt service for the Bell County Water Control and Improvement District Number One Sanitary Sewer System Revenue Bond Series 2025. For Plan One, modifications at the 38 street treatment facility. The city shared the project not to exceed $14,870,000 and the city is responsible for 100% of the debt service associated with these bonds. This is the, the financial impact. It starts on fiscal year 2026 all the way to 2045. The recommendation is to authorize the city manager or his designate to execute and deliver addendum number one to the restated and amended waste disposal contract with WCID number one and authorize the city manager, city secretary, and the designate to take any further actions and execute any necessary instruments to implement the provisions of this resolution and facilitate the issues of the bonds by the district. Mr. Garrett from WCID is here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. You did an excellent job with your presentation.
Thank you.
How does it benefit the residents, water quality, safety, and reliability reliable? It's reliable for us to have that service. Mr. Garrett. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for inviting the council to come out for that tour. Mayor Protem.
Ms. Tangalain, I just wanted to confirm in the presentation that addendum number one that modifies the restated waste disposal contract is December, as of December 14, 2023?
Yes, that's the, the last contract we have.
December 14. I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you for that. Mr. Garrett, you have anything else you want to add?
No, I just, I'm grateful that the council took the time and came out and looked at our facilities and can help better understand the needs for the improvements going forward.
Yes, sir. Thank you both. Madam Secretary.
PH 25003, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2025 annual budget of the city of Colleen to increase revenue and expense accounts in multiple funds.
Thank you for that. Are you ready, Ms. Tangalain?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you again. This item is for the fiscal year 2025 budget amendment carry forward. The purpose for the carry forward in Congress for eligible open purchase orders with delayed goods or services for prior year. Provide funds for delayed projects from the prior year and to carry forward and reallocate ground related items like ARPA, JAG, PECO, CDVG, and home and also carry forward for PFC and opioid settlement expense fund. The general fund, we have a PO budget carry forward for $508,000 for a general fund and ARPA non-CIP carry forward for $270,000 and that includes revenue also. The animal services equipment for $210,000. Rosaroff Community Center equipment for $96,000 and the PFC carry forward for $65,000. This is the line items. As you can see, the revenue is allocated here. And then the, this is the total expenses for general fund. For the special revenue funds, we had PECO ground carry forward for $16,000. We also have a current activity budgets for CDVG, home, home, art funds, revenue and expenses. For the opioid settlement fund, we have PO budget carry forward for $45,000. Pay cable, we have $6,000. For the hot fund, we have a PO budget carry forward for $262,000. The ARPA non-CIP carry forward for 15. And for the law enforcement ground fund, we had the JAG ground carry forward for $21,000 revenue and expenses. And then as you can see here, this is the animal services, your community development. As I mentioned, community development has a revenue. Your home program fund, your home art fund, they both have revenue attached. Your opioid settlement fund and your pay cable system fund, and those are just expenses for last fiscal year. For the hotel occupants and tax fund, we have some ground reimbursement revenue and also the expenses over here. Your law enforcement ground fund, we have some revenue attached to it and for some computers. And then the budget amendment for the enterprise internal services and capital funds. For the golf carts, we have a PO budget carry forward for $47,000. For the water and sewer, we have $554,000 PO. Information Technology Fund, we have a PO carry forward for $159,000. And for the governmental CIP fund, we have a transfer to completed ARPA projects in general and hot fund to EOC projects and CIP fund for $20,000 and that is revenue and expenses attached. And then in the following slides, you can see a by fund and the line item for golf carts, water and sewer. That's a information technology fund. That's the CIP fund has revenue attached, that's ARPA. And the recommendation is the city council approve the ordinance amending the fiscal year 25 annual budget. Do you have any question? I'm sorry, ma'am.
Oh, no, ma'am. Thank you. Could you just break that down for the residents that may not know why we're doing this, please?
Do, allowing the, to roll over and spend funds from previous year is to ensure continuity for ongoing projects and programs and also maximize resource utilizations and reduce pressure on our fiscal year 25 budget allocations. So these are expenditures that we already approved last fiscal year. And if we don't roll forward the, the budget, then the department will have to come up over with the operational expenses.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? One more question for you, Mayor Protem.
Yes, I just want to confirm. Thank you, madam. I just want to, Ms. Tangalain, if you could just confirm that under the memorandum resolution for GTS Technology for Mr. Resto's department, was there 159,000 remaining?
For the, the budget, I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Just confirming that there was 159,000 remaining.
Yes, that's, that's correct.
So it went back to RS-25-010 and he requested the $209,795? And her question is, well, he has $159,266 going back into his account. Is that correct?
I will have to see, is that the last item that he presented?
Yes, ma'am.
I will have to talk to him and see what is that, that he's doing.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that.
Oh, yeah, no problem. Madam Secretary.
PH 25004, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending city of Colleen comprehensive plan providing for amendments to the implementation matrix.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mrs. Messer.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This item is a public hearing to consider amendments to the comprehensive plan's implementation matrix. As you know, the comprehensive plan was adopted on August 23rd of 2022. Comprehensive plan is a planning document that outlines the community's long term vision for growth and development. This slide here outlines our six big ideas, resource stewardship, positive culture and environment, local business ecosystem, safe, affordable, and efficient mobility system, neighborhoods not subdivisions, and vibrant downtowns. This slide reflects the current implementation breakdown. So as you can see here, roughly 66% of the implementation items outlined in the matrix are in progress or complete. The appendix of the 2040 comp plan is, it, it provides an implementation matrix which outlines recommendations, target dates for completion, and responsible departments for implementing those items. The purpose of the proposed amendment is to make minor adjustments to the matrix to better reflect the city's current priorities and staffing. In fall of last year, development services staff met with each city department to discuss progress and anticipated completion dates for the items outlined in the matrix. And based on these meetings, we are recommending updates to the matrix and proposing changes to target completion dates and responsible departments for most of the action items. The proposed changes are intended to accurately reflect current progress and provide a realistic target date for completion of each item. Per the local government code, amendments to the comprehensive plan must be adopted by ordinance following a public hearing and review by the Planning and Zoning Commission. With that, staff is recommending approval of the amendments as presented and the Planning and Zoning Commission on December 9th also recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero. Happy to answer any questions you have.
I think it's two or three. No, I'm sorry. I think it's three right there. Thank you. We have 66, a great presentation, by the way, because I'm really big on the comprehensive plan.
Yes, ma'am.
We have 66% either completed or in progress. Those are projects that the city chose that were our top priority, that lined up with our comprehensive plan. I know that. Can we break it down to the residents why this is so significant, this chart right here, please?
So this chart here represents the implementation that's already underway and ongoing, right? Are you asking about the? ongoing, right? Are you asking about the comp plan implementation in general, or about the proposed amendment tonight?
A lot of people know we have a comprehensive plan, right? How do we work that comprehensive plan? We have a number here, just to the lowest term. You brief us, we read our slides, we read the notes that come with it, got it. But moving forward in twenty twenty-five, future focus, we, I want more detail for the residents so they understand why we do what we do, and we are hearing to the comprehensive plan.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Let me talk a little bit about the implementation matrix itself. So in the back of the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan includes a lot of graphics and text, and then in the back there's an appendix. It's essentially a chart. It's about ten or fifteen pages long, and it includes action items. And those action items are broken down into groups that are reflective of the six big ideas, right? So you have action items under each big idea category, and each one of those action items has a, an anticipated timeline for completion, and it outlines the responsible department for each item. And so, the intent of the amendment tonight is to make minor adjustments to this implementation matrix to accurately reflect where we are and where we're going. So to answer your question about why an implementation matrix is important, this is the roadmap for implementation of the plan, right? So this is what outlines the actionable tasks that, towards implementation. And so what we're doing tonight is just proposing to make minor adjustments to the, the timing and the responsible party for each action item.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that, because this is our twenty twenty forty plan, and you're looking at it, sixty percent of our twenty forty plan is completed, but we know that we have a ways out to complete everything. Thank you. That was an excellent explanation. Mayor Proton.
Thank you, madam. You actually touched on part of my question. Thank you, Ms. Messer, for your presentation. So just moving forward, my request would be, and again, of course, at the behest of the council, is that for, as we move forward, I'd like to see a year-over-year comparison, just twenty-three to twenty-four, and then exactly which ones are not started, so that that way people can have, kind of keep tally and keep track as we go through these presentations moving forward in the future. Thank you.
You did an excellent job. We just wanted more detail so the residents can really understand what we're doing with the com- Mr. Cagle.
Mayor, I think another way to answer that question is the previous comprehensive plan. While it was a pretty good plan, a lot of work went into it. It got put on a shelf, and nothing ever, nothing happened. So the fact that the planning department can show you this chart with this kind of achievement, I think is pretty remarkable.
Thank you for that. In the future, more detail, please.
Yes, ma'am. The other thing I'd like to add is, you may not be aware, maybe you are aware, that there's an online dashboard for, for the residents. There's an online dashboard. It's Colleen2040.com, where you can go and track the implementation progress for each of the action items in the matrix in, in real time. So we update that quarterly, and it, it reflects the actual action items in the matrix and their progress. So you can go there and see currently what, what items are not started, what items are in progress, what items are ongoing, and what items are not yet, are, are complete.
Thank you. In the future, more detail.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. We would now have our citizen comments. Melissa Brown. You have four minutes.
I think it's funny that now we're future-focused, just because it's twenty twenty-five. Why weren't we future-focused before this? I believe that suicide prevention is a very worthy and needy issue to be addressed, especially in our city. But the councilwoman put more emphasis on the financial investments in downtown than any of the good work they're doing to help support people in need. We don't know anything about their program other than it addresses veteran suicide. And that is not the point of the Star Award, is to tell us how much people are putting into downtown and reinvesting financially in our community. It's the exact opposite purpose. Good job choosing a person who so eloquently used the invocation to praise the mayor and council and chastise the residents who dare to hold them accountable. We had a full, it, the invocations on the agenda, thank you. As far as the consulting, we had a full inventory of all of our stuff done. During the Parks Master Plan and Comprehensive Plan, we have not built that much since then. We haven't even really changed that much since then. So are we so financially stressed that we are now putting our city up for sale? Why would we want the Colleen name on anything when we could have people just buy naming rights? The money is so badly needed. We have an entire marketing department and a rec services director that, based on their resumes and hiring, tell me they should be able to develop and draft a plan for council to approve and put out an RFP or another bid announcement. If we need this money so badly, it is, it is forward-thinking to not give up twenty percent of the revenue that we get. The mayor already knows at least one name she wants to see. The playground at Conder Park, so we're going to parcel off parks now that already have historical naming. That's as ridiculous as naming each terminal at the airport and having five different names out there. We're selling the, are we selling the naming rights on the one ninety-five storage tank in perpetuity with the maintenance at our expense, like we've done with the last two water storage tanks? If not, maybe we should think about it, because apparently we need the money. This council continues to approve bonds with little to no notice other than legal newspaper notice, and they don't listen to us anyway. So you're going to approve a land purchase that will require new debt later this year in addition to the tax-backed bonds, the new WCID bond, and the street bonds that are all certificates of obligation that don't require or allow us a vote. Well, the W, I'm sorry, the storage tank of the WCID bonds won't affect our taxes. They will affect our water and sewer rates. On April ninth, council approved sixteen million five hundred and eighty thousand dollars in bonds for water system improvements. And then in September of twenty-three, they also approved a deal reducing debt by about fourteen thousand. So we still owe more than we did. I would only support this if it would solve the issue of an entire neighborhood or more in North Colleen having sewage backing up into their homes in District One. It is not all a private ownership issue when everyone is having the same issue, being told that they can't even flush toilet paper down their toilets. At Christmas time, I went to visit a woman who her bathtub, her kitchen sink, her bathroom sink, her toilet were full of raw sewage backing up from the line, only partially caused by the private side of the line. Is this acceptable? How much growth have we had out there since those lines were replaced? I'm guessing we haven't done anything to improve the sewer lines out there and increase the size for the amount of growth and density we have, because we didn't even know we had a four-inch line over here on Gilmer Street. Let's be forward-thinking about the people who live here and take care of them before we take out more money for projects we don't need, just because you want a pretty little food trip.
Mayor Proton.
Thank you, madam. There's a couple things I will, the purpose of our Star Award is to raise awareness of people that are not seeking glory and potential attention for what they do and the services they provide to our community. And I will not allow him to be discounted or discredited for the services that he's providing to our veterans on top of all of the other services that he's providing to our community. I'll be happy to get some additional information and share more about that organization through my various social media outlets. Also, you know, perception is nine-tenths, I guess, you know, but when I hear corporate prayer, calling out, you know, in her faith, just asking for unity and prayer and peace, I don't see where the negative is there. There's also a line improvement that we've got a CIP project, which I'll also get some additional information for and ensure that it's only posted on my personal social media, but that we get a statement issued out about what's coming down the pike as it relates to the sewer lines for District One. There's projects that have already been implemented, that have already been authorized for future development.
Sean Price. Mr. Price. You have four minutes.
Good evening, City Council. So on the RS twenty-five zero zero nine, will there be city making votes to allow the naming of these places? Will they be able to vote yea or nay to have their, the property that they pay for to maintain and pay taxes for to operate? We're gonna, we're gonna pay for that, right? So don't we get a say in it of who's gonna buy it? Don't we get to say, you know, I might, I don't like Penn-Fet. I don't disagree with it. They discriminated against me when I was a soldier working at the Pentagon. So I don't like them. So, I mean, there are objections to some of the things that are here, and there are different viewpoints in naming these buildings or these properties after commercial buildings. It's kind of like the Bad News Bears with wearing the bail bond shirt, right? Kind of looks stupid, in my opinion. For twenty-five zero one zero, how many computers is this gonna buy? Or is this part of the, I think, I don't know, I can't remember if it's five hundred thousand or less for the software that we bought last year? I mean, we just keep adding and adding that, and I don't know why. We spent a bunch of money last year for this year to buy computers and software, and now we're asking for more money for computers. So I'm a little confused. For RS twenty-five zero one two, will this incorporate any of the CBP One app paroled illegal aliens, right? And/or will this also be forwarded to anyone that is in crisis, such as the homeless, right? So that, those are the questions that I have with that one. And then, for RS twenty-five zero one four, what is the actual debt service cost that we have right now, that we are actually paying out annually right now? I think it last year was twelve point seven million. With all this new added money that we're adding today, what does that increase it to? Because I know that we borrowed ninety million dollars last year, and we could only get up to ninety-two million, right? And we planned, we were planning to spend a hundred and eighty-five million in total services and revenues for the whole process of city cleaning spending. So we're just adding more on top of the debt, and I'm just wondering, you know, how that's gonna affect me in paying my taxes? Because despite being a veteran, some of us don't get a hundred percent. So we do pay taxes on our property up here, and we are retired, and we have a limited income. So with the cost of everything going up due to the ARPA, right, raising the interest, I think that we need to, you know, come out with some specificity when we're talking about this, the city budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Price. So RS dash twenty-five dash zero zero nine, the city is not buying the building. We're looking for sponsors to come out and support us financially. They can put their name on the building. There is no guarantee about any particular company, because it has to come back before the council. It's all about building partnerships. On RS dash twenty-five dash zero one zero, replacing computers ten percent every year or every six months. I'm not really sure about the timeline on that. For RS dash twenty-five dash zero one two, Assistant City Manager Wilson stated that they will have to follow criterias, criteria that we have the city in place before they are hired to do that internship, and no money will be coming from the city of Colleen. You know, the city of Colleen is moving forward. Twenty twenty-four is behind us, so we're focused on the future. These are some great ideas and great items that is on this agenda. And I, I'm grateful and I'm thankful for staff and all of their hard work and their commitment and what they do, and also this council that makes the hard decision as we move our city forward. This is a positive thing for our residents at home and also to our Citizen Academy students, that what we do is taken on in consideration, not for just today, but how the city is gonna grow five, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now. That's why we have the comprehensive plan, Colleen twenty forty, forward. Any more comments from council before I move forward? Are we ready? Mr., okay, thank you, sir. We would now go into our regular session. Council, you have three minutes each to speak three times. Consent agenda, Madam Secretary.
MN twenty-five zero zero three, RS twenty-five zero zero nine, RS twenty-five zero one zero, RS twenty-five zero one one, RS twenty-five zero one two, RS twenty-five zero one three, and RS twenty-five zero one four.
Thank you very much. Bless you. Can I get a motion to approve or reject the consent agenda, Councilmember Board?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Alvarez.
Mayor, I second that motion.
Thank you, sir. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. We would now have our public hearing. Madam Secretary.
PH twenty-five zero zero three, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-five annual budget of the city of Colleen to increase revenue and expense accounts in multiple funds. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Colleen, Texas, amending the FY twenty twenty-five annual budget of the city of Colleen to increase revenue and expense accounts in multiple funds, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance, providing a savings clause, and establishing an effective date."
Thank you. Council Mrs., oh, did you want to go back over?
Yes, I would like to address the question for Major Proton. About the a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, these funds are committed already for equipment. So Mr. Resto is not gonna get it back to use in other projects. It's already committed.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Mrs. Tangaline has gone through the slides. Would you like for her to go back through? We will now open up for public hearing. Mr. Price. You have four minutes.
Thanks again, City Council. So it's pretty much the same as the twenty-five zero one four. I'm just trying to figure out, because I, I didn't see it, all the added costs that we're adding to right now as compared to what we finished in October and added in November and December for this year's budget. My question is, is how much are we spending for the annual debt cost? What does it cost us to borrow that ninety million dollars, independent to all the other costs, right? So it's, it's kind of like going to the grocery store, right? You got a set amount of money, and you're on a calculator, and you're tapping in there, and you just want to know what you're spending, right? And you want to make sure that you cover your taxes. So you know what you got to save in order to pay the bills, right? Or what you got to borrow from the bank, right? Like I said, if I remember, if I remember correctly, we're at an annual budget of a hundred and eighty-five million, borrowing ninety million, right? But we are rating, our triple-A rating, or what that would be, is that we put it at risk at ninety-two million. If we borrowed more than that, then we put ourselves at risk. If we borrowed more than that, then we put ourselves at risk, right? For our, for our rating, for borrowing money as a city. And so, my concern is, is that we're getting well, well, far beyond all this because our country is already going over 37 trillion in debt. Now, we're going further and further in debt as a city. And to me, it's all about the spending, right? Do we need what we're saying that we're spending the money for? So, that, that's what I would like to be, actually come out, is what are we spending for the entire year, right? We already know what we're buying, but what are we actually spending? What's the total bill? What's the cost of the borrowing the money? And what's the amount of money that we've borrowed for this year alone? That's my question, my, my three questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You have, you have eight minutes.
Hello, City Council of Colleen. Thank you to my not formal advisors, A and G, for these ideas. A truck part for, or PH-25-003, increase in revenue, number one. A truck part for 18-wheelers near I-14. Monthly, weekly, and daily rates could mean an increase in city funds. An increase in safety in neighborhoods. And also find the trucks that park in the neighborhoods. So, number two. Actual code enforcement. But that would mean that officers that work on the weekends, and that means more code enforcement officers. Imagine if the cars that block the sidewalks, if they were ticketed. City code violation means that fines and...
Ma'am, Madam Secretary, stop the clock. Madam City Attorney, is he on the agenda? Because I can see that thin line with code, I'm assuming he's going to code enforcement. We need more for people parking illegal, which could, I know that's, we're not talking about the whole budget in general. I know it's revenue left over, but is, is there that thin line there? I don't know. I'm, that's why I'm asking you. Because he says something about fee, that can bring in revenue, so.
Yeah. The item is an ordinance amending the, the annual budget, and there are a lot of things in the annual budget. And so, I would just, yeah, we need to keep it on the amendments of the annual budget. I know that that's not what staff has presented. This is going beyond that. And so, Mayor, you have the discretion to find whether that's on the agenda topic or not.
Right. So, so, ma'am, basically, I, I, there's a thin line there. I'm just gonna let him go, and because we have to stay about it on the amendment, and also this is revenue left over that we're gonna, yes, it's not new, it's not a new budget. So, the code enforcement, we're not hiring anybody, that's not even on the agenda.
That wasn't the question, and it was increasing revenue and increasing safety.
See, that's where I thought he was trying to go, but that's not one of the items on there, so.
Maybe to help a little bit, these are specific amendments that have been proposed to the budget, and those are all in the presentation. So, I, I don't know, what else, how else to address that?
I just see the word, where it can be confused, that annual budget, but we know that this item is on specific things that are in the budget.
Right, but it can be related to how it's on the agenda. So, we don't have all the specifics listed on the agenda. So, I think, I think you can allow that on some level. I would certainly...
It's a thin line, so I, I'm just gonna let it go through.
Yeah, I would certainly say, if anything is off topic or is brought up, council needs to be particularly sensitive about not entering into that conversation further and only giving specific, brief information in, in response to those things that are brought up.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Secretary, start the clock. And thank you.
Number three, cars again. The junk cars, we could find the owners if they leave their vehicles parked and they're blocking the sidewalk areas. Or they could be towed. And that would improve the safety of the neighborhoods. And I have a quote. Censorship reflects society's lack of confidence. It is a hallmark of the authoritarian regime. That's by Potter Stewart. Thank you.
Slow getting to the lectern tonight, and all the experts and museum traffic and downtown traffic, pardon me. I, I think following up on what the previous speaker had to say. When we consider, there was some confusion, and he was stopped mid-sentence, perhaps if we had our full First Amendment rights back, we could speak on topics related to, on that, that raised other questions from the specific topic. But I guess that would be inconvenient to yourselves. When we talk about this excess revenue, why do we have it? Why wasn't it spent? I mean, I, I'm well on record saying I'm not a financial genius, but I'm pretty sure that ARPA funds at all are under requirements of when and how to be spent. They're not a rainy day fund. I think what the previous speaker was going for kinda typifies what I came to this council over 10 years ago with my first suggestion. If we had more police and more code enforcement, we wouldn't have to wrestle with this, well, we have to spend this money, or this money isn't being spent right. We could have our own rainy day fund and have a surplus that is at completely our discretion to spend. But all that forward thinking didn't carry from a decade earlier. I don't, I don't understand why whenever this budget stuff comes up, there's always money that seems to be abracadabra money. There'd be someone up here advocating for funds, for one thing, and Mr. Kegel will say, well, we don't have money for that. And it'd be a small amount. Week or two later, another petitioner will come up here or presentation, and all of a sudden, abracadabra, money drops out of the sky, right? That's another reason we've been asking for a forensic audit, so that we can avoid situations like this, all this balance forward, right? If we have money and we haven't spent it, it needs to go somewhere. Not this, we'll spend it out here, little special project here, special project there. All of these ARPA funds should be spent by now. We're in a new administration, the period and the scope that those funds were to be spent on, many ways, were not spent per what was written, per the documents of the ARPA Act itself. So, if we, if we're not allocating enough of it or properly, that presents a problem. I mean, that's, that's a lack of foresight and vision in moving forward. That, that, that doesn't fit. This is just constructive criticism. So, if, following on what the previous speaker had to say, maybe if we did have enough cops on the road to actually patrol, hand out basic parking tickets, if we had code enforcement agents that would help the town look better, going back to more police actually on the road, we'd actually correct some of the bad behaviors around here at the lowest possible level. That would move the town forward, that would clean up the reputation, speeding, parking, you name it. Not, not to the level, and I will say caveat, not to the level where Ferguson, Missouri, made that their only and sole income model. That's a mistake, where you police for profit, no. But there is, with 160,000 residents in here, you can't tell me that a town of this size can't have a general revenue stream and also mild behavior modification. You have people say, hey, this is a bigger community. That would be the forward-thinking benefit. But for 10 years, I've been doing that, for 10 years, I've been ignored. And then, as I started to look at other things, where you folks like to push back at me in the press and on social media, which I don't have, but I'm still aware of, that's the problem. But you won't sit down and talk with me.
I have a couple of questions that I would sincerely appreciate an answer to before you vote. One of the items says allocate $65,000 in unspent grocery store initiative appropriations. Can you please remind us where this money will be applied to? Is it still going to go into a grocery store initiative for North Colleen for the food deserts? How much of the excess revenue that we're rolling over is already spent, encumbered, or accounted for in the FY 25 budget for either purchases or projects, or anything that we have already done or is coming up? Because I don't see where we have any excess money that's going into CIP fund balances or any other fund balances. So, does that mean we did not have any excess funds that were not already encumbered? Are any of these amendments to pay for the right turn lane on Featherline that we were told right before the budget, we didn't have money for, and then right afterwards, money came up even though it was not in the CIP list? And I think I owe a clarification, because when I come up here and I talk about the finances and the financial situation of the city, I can't entirely blame the council. You're not experts in finance. You're not experts in how to read the, the ordinance that was just presented to you. You listen to staff, and you vote based off of that. There's one person, and one person only in the city, who is ultimately responsible for the finances, and he's also sitting up there with you. Our city manager, Kent Kegel, is responsible for making the budget, making sure that everything is going to necessities and where it's absolutely needed, and advising the council on where that would best be spent. So, on some of these projects that we're carrying forward or we're carrying over, are they projects that need to be done? Are they going to move the city forward into the future? Or could we better take some of this money that was left over from last year that we're carrying over and apply it to the projects that I was talking about, Mayor Protem, where we could take that money? And you can take my criticism for you want, but when I come up here and I, I have four minutes to shoot everything out for an agenda, it's to get you asking questions, to get you thinking. And it's very disappointing as a resident when that doesn't happen. So, again, I want to ask those questions, please be answered before this is voted on. And again, where is the $65,000 for the grocery store initiative going? I think that is probably the most important one on the minds of the people that live, especially in North Colleen.
Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is for Ms. Tanglin, if you could come back up, please. I, I wanted to see if you would provide clarification on this for, for everyone, including myself. The term used in the presentation is carry forward. What does carry forward mean from a financial expert such as yourself? And is this truly extra money, or was it committed funds that actually haven't been invoiced or paid out yet?
You are correct. These are committed funds from fiscal year 2024 that need to be rolled over because we did not spend the last year for one or two reasons. Sometimes there are, the services are not rendered yet, we are waiting for the goods. So, these are funds, there are no extra funds, they're funds that were committed already for purchases already approved to be made in 2024.
So, in layman's terms, would it be fair to say the city has written a check for these monies, but the checks haven't been cashed yet?
That's correct, because we're waiting for the goods still, but we already ordered the goods, per se.
Thank you, ma'am.
Also, can I clarify the ARPA funds? For the ARPA funds, we have committed 100% of ARPA funds, and we have until December 2026 to spend all the committed funds. And then, the money that we are rolling forward are already committed funds, we just have to roll forward the budget to be able to spend it.
Thank you. Mr. Kegel, we do this every year.
Well, I think that was a, a good explanation, but it's interesting that you get lectured in saying that perhaps you don't ask questions when we did this the two years that Ms. Brown was on council. She understands the process very well, and she understands what Ms. Tanglin explained. These are not leftover money, leftover revenue. It's, it's all committed, and it is, the question was directed at me, it is all needed, and none of it is in the 25 budget.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Madam Secretary.
Madam Mayor, will we be taking a vote for this item?
Yes, ma'am. Can I get a motion to approve or disapprove PH-25-003? Oh, Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve PH-25-003 as presented.
Councilmember Board?
Second.
All in favor, yes? All opposed, no? Motion carries six to zero. Whenever you're ready, Madam Secretary.
PH-25-004, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending City of Colleen Comprehensive Plan, providing for amendments to the implementation matrix. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen Comprehensive Plan, amending the Comprehensive Plan Implementation Matrix, providing a severability clause, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for publication, and an effective date."
Thank you. Council Mrs. Messer, she has gone through the slides. Would you like for her to go back through them? No, thank you? Public hearing is open. Mr. ... Mr. Forino. You have four minutes, sir.
Firstly, no course is favorable unless it is set. Like, no wind is favorable unless we know what we're doing. Roman that most of you have never heard of, Publius Cerius, wrote, "There is a bad plan that cannot be changed," owing to and conceding that there is such a thing as flexibility and adaptability. I just have concerns and critique on this comprehensive plan. We have spent money now on comprehensive plans twice. One, as Mr. Cagle announced, was shelved before, and now we're doing this. It just seems a lot of times that the plan is backfitted when things change. Like, why do we have a plan if we're not following it? It just seems you need, need to have, you know, it's, it's almost like playing a board game with a five-year-old. Five-year-old's losing or whatever, you change the conditions of the game to make it favorable. That's not directly on any of you. I'm just saying that's, if you've ever played Candy Land with a five-year-old, you're going to see that effect. And you have to, you have to have the plan and stick to it. If the conditions change, well, then that says that foresight, that planning and the comprehensive plan wasn't worth much. If it's constantly changing, I would, I would argue, at the rate that we are going with all these changes that I've lost count of, when you take a look at the comprehensive plan from where it started to what has deviated in course, the two, yeah, there's going to be change, but when, when you go so far for so long, the result is in no way going to resemble the original plan. An example. If you don't know who William Bly was, captain of HMAS bounty, he was an actual guy. Marginal officer at best, but he was good at one thing. He was one hell of a navigator. And he achieved, to this day, which is one of the most stupendous feats of navigation with limited equipment, but he had confidence in his abilities. He stuck to the plan. Every person that was in that small craft that he was set adrift with, they made it to civilization. I mean, if you look it up, it's just, it's just one of those interesting points of history. But the point being, he stuck to the plan. They didn't change the plan every couple hours, every couple days. "Oh, we should go this direction." "No, we should go that direction." Stuck to the plan and went with it, with practically zero deviation. I mean, that's a practical demonstration of what I'm trying to get across here. That if you keep backfitting the plan to meet the situation, you don't have a plan. That's irresponsible. And that also kind of makes it seem like the money on the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive, supposed to be wide expansive, definition of comprehensive. Again, I'll concede that it's a bad plan that can't be changed, but if the plan is nothing but change, I just question the wisdom that goes into it. We find the plan, stick to it, and then if we get to a point where economic, climate, whatever, any, any existential factors that we have no control of change, then change the plan radically. You don't change the course of a river overnight. But where there's more change than are actually execution of the plan, again, that's no plan. That's it.
Melissa Brown, you have four minutes.
From the presentation background. The purpose of the proposed amendment is to make minor adjustments to the implementation matrix to better reflect the city's current priorities and staffing. That is the opposite of following a plan. If we were following the plan, our current priorities and staffing would be in alignment with what is already written, and we wouldn't be changing it to meet the current status. We wouldn't be changing our priorities to meet the current priorities for the city. We, our priorities would be what was in the plan already. If I could just real quick, a couple of the things that really bother me. Here's one of the things that has never been done since we implemented the plan. Number two, highlight big ideas and implementation of priorities at the beginning of every city business meeting, council, P&amp;Z, staff, and community. That's never been done at the beginning of the meetings, so that is something that is being changed in the plan. So now we're not going to do that. Just, we'll, we'll bring it up if it comes up, and that's only going to be through Development Services. But there's a lot more to the comprehensive plan than just Development Services. This was literally every department and as many citizens as we could get involved who were part of this. Publish and distribute progress reports to the community annually and potentially quarterly in the future, which was going to be led by Development Services and then backed up by Communications, now Communications and Marketing. Publications don't go out. I did hear that we have the websites. But how many, how many citizens know that there's even a website? How many of the council members before that knew there was a website you could direct your citizens to for that information? So it goes back to the education. If we were bringing this up and we were talking about it at the meetings like the plan called for, then everyone would know that. A lot of this comes down to education, not just for the citizens, but also for the council. And a lot of times, yes, Mr. Cagle, I do know the answers to the questions and how they work. I ask them so that the citizens can hear it. All right. So I think the other big issue that I have is we are letting all of our now existing community resources consolidation for workforce and business development to go into and be handled through nothing, but the Chamber of Commerce and KEDC, they are going to take the lead on it, promote local success stories and people. They're taking the lead on that with marketing and direct, marketing and development, communications and marketing, rather, coming in behind them. We've got two, two things where KEDC is going to be the lead on. KEDC, while we have an MOU with them, is not part of the city. They're not a city group. They're not a city organization. They can't make official votes for the city, pass ordinance or anything like that. To quote the mayor on what she said about P&amp;Z members, they're just people that get appointed to that board. You don't necessarily know what their specialties are because six out of nine of them are coming from other organizations, and we just give them a customary nod and say, "You get to pick per the agreement." Why are they making decisions for the forward look of the city? We're paying them to do a job for us. We should be telling them how we want the city to move forward, how we want business to grow, and then they should be implementing it based on the paycheck that they get from us. And if they can't do it, take some money from them and give it to someone else. I know that the Black Chamber has come in here multiple times asking for money. They're doing what's in the comp plan. They're building downtown. And we keep denying them, but now we want to let other people lead our comp plan.
Mr. Price. Sean Price. You have four minutes.
Again, thank you, City Council. So who's failing in the plan? We have one-third of the plan not even initiated. So out of that 33.3%, who's failing? Why are they failing to execute? If the plan was supposed to already be executed, 100% of the plan should already be in action, action mode. Right? I get it that not everything will be finished, but at least by this time, since when you started the comprehensive plan, all the items that are in there, right? From, from my understanding, they should already be, should have been started at least, at a minimum. And they're not. But nothing is, nothing is explained in its presentation as the successes and failures and it's the items that are in action mode. Right? So where's my money going? Where are you guys spending my money? Yeah? That's what I'm, that's the way I'm looking at it. You're spending my money on this plan. So who's failing? It's not discussed. This is a pass or fail type of statement here, comprehensive plan. You have pass or fail. Either departments are succeeding or they're failing. Right? What are their hangups? That's not discussed. That's what I would like to see explained, is what are the difficulties? What can we do to help them out to be successful? Do we need to pressure somebody? Do we need to protest somebody to get something done? But because it's spending money. Spend, spend, spend. That's what I'm looking at. That's the way I'm seeing it. And I'm like, "Stop spending money, because we're in debt." Stop being in debt. How about save money and earn interest? And then take that money and spend it. That's just me. Right? And last but not least, you know, the condescension, right? The, the seething attitudes towards members that come up here and speak, whether they were on that dais or not, right? It's unprofessional and inappropriate to state the way that they state it. Thank you.
Public hearing is closed. Council, I'm asking in advance to give me some leeway on this one. The comprehensive plan is dear to my heart. The 2040 Comprehensive Plan, 2040. This is a plan, the plan on our future until 2040. This is just a plan. And what's on the agenda is to update. You heard the presentation, to update, to ensure that the residents, the council, staff understand that these are the deadlines for these particular projects. On the Colleen Economic Development, a KEDC, there are three council members that sit on there, and Mr. Cagle. And we pay them for a service. It goes with the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan is a working document. Even in your own home budget, you may plan to pay this, but if you don't have enough money, you have another bill that you may be able to pay until you get enough money to pay the bill that you had scheduled to pay. It's a plan. It's a working document, 2040. We may want to buy this equipment. It may be scheduled for next week. But if that equipment is not available, the City of Colleen cannot stop moving forward. We go to the next project, because it may be available. You can't steal money from the comprehensive plan. It's just a plan. And the City of Colleen invested in this. And we got input from all entities, from the residents, from partners, from the council, from the staff. It, it just breaks my heart to see that this council and the council before it have worked so hard to move our city forward. And you're going to hear "future board," because I said it. We can't continue to do business as usual and think that the city is going to prosper. Attacks, that's, that's part of it. But to say that we are not trying to do right by the residents and move the city forward and not follow the comprehensive plan is an untruth. Mayor Protem.
I want to thank the citizens that made comments that kind of opened the door for this, and it gives me the opportunity to raise the flag. There are community conversations that absolutely have to happen.
Mr. Cedric Moss and Mr. Price, please be, be respectful. Thank you. I apologize for that. Mayor Protem.
There were questions about changing priorities and, and different things along that nature. And I just want to just sound the alarm right now, just knowing that, again, focusing on our future and being aware, things that happen within our country federally and how they can impact us locally. Since the beginning, I've been talking about, as we work on moving our city forward, we have to pay attention to those things. As it relates to the comprehensive plan, there are some things and changes that are going to directly impact our community, and we need all hands on deck to identify those changes and figure out how we can best protect and insulate our citizens from some of those things that are, that are happening. So again, with this plan, it is comprehensive. It is going to change. But I do think it's important that, not only, like we mentioned, the dashboard, to make sure that people are aware through the presentation, following backup, to show them year over year. I think we've addressed that already. So I think it is increasingly important, especially in the climate that we're in, that we continue to make sure that we are educating our folks. And we go back to our several meetings, I think almost virtually all of them, we've referred back to the comprehensive plan in some way, shape, or form. But at this point, I am sounding the alarm and letting everyone know that we need to be all hands on deck. And so if there is a change to our plan or the way in which we do business, we need to be aware of how the changes at the top are going to affect our citizens on a higher level moving forward.
Thank you. And also our communication team, Mrs. Ford and her team, they have done a tremendous job with putting out information. And she also have come to our council meetings on a regular basis and put out this information, our website, our Facebook page, where you can go and get this information. And I can honestly say this. If people are not involved because they choose not to be involved, and I can see why, if you just look at the camera when you're looking at us at home. So we need to stay focused on what's important, and that's us working together and not against each other. We have to change how we interact with each other in 2025 because it gets us nowhere. So let's all just be professional, be thoughtful, and let's just work together to make the city even better. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to mention or remind citizens and the council as well that the comprehensive plan is a guiding document. And when they did that initial presentation, that was explained to everyone that this is a guiding document for the council to take into consideration when making decisions. I know that we've been doing that, and we're also referencing the plan as necessary. I know Mr. Revell, when he was here, he worked to bake that into every public hearing related to zoning cases. And so it's something we've definitely, definitely been abiding by. And so I just want to highlight that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Can I get a motion to approve PH-25-004? Councilmember Solomon.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I make a motion that we approve PH-25-004.
Councilmember Boyd.
Second.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. Discussion items. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
DS-25-001, City Auditor Briefing.
Good afternoon, Mr. Gray. You can.
All right, yeah, that'll work. Thank you. Okay. Oh, thank you. This is to the right.
Yes.
Push this, okay. Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, Assistant City Manager, City Attorney, and City Secretary. Okay, so this is my second annual year in review. And this is, I am the city auditor. The, I have my audit interns, Danielle Woodward, doing a great job. Puts up with my dad jokes and constant movie references, which is an added plus. But, so this, let me go through it. I'll try to get through this as quickly as possible. Quick rehash, mission statement. The city auditor department's mission is to provide independent analyses of city programs. The City Auditor Department's mission is to provide independent analyses of city programs and activities to ensure a properly functioning system of internal controls, promote efficiency and effectiveness in city operations, and enhance transparency of the city government. I'm sorry, there it is. All right. So I wrote this seven years ago. It's a little governmentese. I'll probably revisit it this year to make it a little more plain English. But, but in a nutshell, that's what I do, review, review programs in the city for operationally, the, looking for efficiencies. Also, I am, I am, as an auditor, required to design my programs to look for fraud, if there is fraud out there or irregularities. I want to talk a little bit about the, what I do. There are all kinds of auditors. The, on what's called the internal auditor and what's called a performance auditor. So it's, some people I've talked, they don't, they kind of give me the tilted German Shepherd response when I tell them what I do. So I just want to end this, by the way, this is Chandler. The running gag on Friends was that nobody knew what Chandler did. And that's what my wife used to call me Chandler is because she said, nobody knows what I do. But, so let me talk a little bit about what I do. So we, the city gets basically two kinds of audits. We get the financial audits, which are done by the external auditor. They come in once a year. And then you have the internal audits. That's what I do, which is called the performance auditing. Now, this is my audit bible. This is put out by the GAO, the Government Accountability Office, Government Auditing Standards for, this is the 2024 revision. They actually wrote them, wrote it for themselves years ago, but it was eventually adopted by other government auditors. So most local, most local city auditors use this. Okay, so independence and objectivity. So being an internal auditor, a little bit different from the external auditor. It's independence is, it's a little tougher. You're within the organization. So you gotta, it's a, it's a constant, you have to be constantly aware of it. So independence and objectivity. The Yellow Book spends a lot of time talking about this, and for good reason, the independence of mind and appearance. The, if I'm viewed as anything other than independent, then that's, that's kind of it. I'm done. The, so it's something I'm very guarded about. And that doesn't mean you have to be a jerk. You don't have to snub everybody. You can still be friendly, but it's something constantly on, on, on my mind. The, in terms of the process, so the Yellow Book talks about the process for going through the audits. Let me just go through this real quick. The, and I've got movie references here just because I like movie references. The, so the first phase of any audit that I do, it starts with preliminary planning. And that is just getting, going out and getting familiar with the program. You get the budget data, you go out, you get the ordinances, applicable ordinances, resolutions, newspaper articles that may be out there, prior audits done by me or done by other auditors. So just gets you, it gives you an idea of what it is you're looking at. Once you, once you're done with that, you get when the audit starts, they call that the, the survey phase. And that is, this is, I don't know if you guys can see this. This is to serve with love with the city poitier. So the survey phase is kind of like going to school, where you just immerse yourself in the, in the program to get yourself up to speed, try to become an instant expert as much as you can as to what it is you're looking at. And so that's where you, you're talking to all the staff, you're looking at the policies, you're looking at the inputs and the outcomes and just, it's usually here, it's here during this phase that if there are problems, that's when you start to see them. And then from there, this is where you, where you start to put together, so you, so you kind of figure out where the problems are here. And then you go to the verification phase. And this is the, so verification phase, that's where the evidence comes in. And this is where, this was Jaws, well, this was not a boating accident. So you gotta go where the evidence takes you. And usually, you're gonna, you're gonna have an idea of what that is from the survey phase. Sometimes, sometimes it takes you in another direction. And that's where the independence comes in, you just keep in an open mind. You want to stay away from what's called confirmation bias when you go into an audit with a preconceived idea of what the problems are. And then that colors your, your intake of the, of the evidence. You may ignore evidence that doesn't support your, whatever your, your conclusion is, your preconceived conclusion. So it's something you need to stay away from as an auditor, as a confirmation bias. And then the, and then from there, you get, you put the report together. So I, I spend a lot of time in report writing because I like to make them as readable as possible. And the more complex they are, the tougher it is to just kind of break it down into plain language. But it's, but it's something I really put a lot of effort into. Because if you've, if you've read as many, as many dry audit reports as I have, you, lastly, you want to be as, as a person who adds to that. And then the, and then the final, so you make recommendations in your audit. And you don't just walk away. You gotta, you gotta come back. You gotta follow up and make sure that whatever it is you recommend has been implemented. Of course, I'm much nicer than Arnold, but you do have to, you do have to follow up. This real quick is, so the elements of a finding, whenever you come across an issue in a report, you gotta, you gotta put together a finding. The Yellow Book defines what the components you need to have to, for a finding to, to be, support, to support their, to be, in compliance with their, with their requirements. And those, and these are actually based on some Greek philosopher that came up with the components for, for an effective argument. And they are the condition, the cause, the criteria, the effect, and then the recommendation, the condition being just what the problem is, the cause being how that problem occurred, criteria being what it was, what it should have been. And then the effect is why it matters. And sometime, and sometimes it, it doesn't matter. And then that begs the question of if there's a policy that somebody's not following and there's no impact, then it kind of, then you need to think about whether that, whether we need that policy or not. But, and then the recommendation generally flows from the cause. Okay, and then, so that's that. Let me talk about the actual reports we did. So for this year, we issued the abandoned properties audit, water meter replacement program, and the KCCC mixed beverage operation. So abandoned properties, this was a, kind of a sequel to the outstanding liens audit that I did a few years ago. And it was something that, that I took note of during that audit and decided to come back and delve deeper into this. So the, the objectives of it were to determine the inventory of abandoned tax delinquent properties with outstanding code enforcement liens, determine the financial impact of these properties in uncollected taxes and unpaid liens, assess the feasibility and benefits of implementing a land bank type program to acquire and sell or repurpose these abandoned properties. So there were about, at the time of the audit, and this is not static, it goes up and down. At the time of the audit, there were about 37 tax delinquent properties with code enforcement liens, some of the, some of the code enforcement lien going back 20, and in one case, more than 30 years. And most of these were located in the North Colleen revitalization area. And so there was, there was uncollected tax revenue for, for our portion, the city's portion of it was about 58,000. And this is not annual, by the way, this is collectively, the cumulatively unreimbursed code enforcement maintenance costs over 200,000. There were some individual properties where we had spent, we have literally been maintaining for decades in the, in the tens of thousands. The, and of course, there's an impact to it. The, it affects the communities where these, where these unkempt properties are, reduces property values, it reduces the quality of life. And so the, so the recommendation was, it's, it's not, again, it's not, it's not a huge problem compared to some of the Rust Belt cities in the, in the 70s. But it is a problem that's not going to go away without some proactive steps on our part. And towards that end, I recommended that we develop and implement a policy and legal framework necessary to create a land bank type program. There's, Waco's got a great model that we can school off of. And, and we went up and talked to them, and they're more than willing to help if we want to try to do something. A big part of it is just establishing a memorandum of understanding with the other tax collecting entities that would allow us to take, acquire property on their behalf. And then we can do what we can do. Sometimes we'll be able to return it to the tax rolls. In some cases, it's just not, some of these lots are just not marketable, where we may have to just either turn them into green space or, or pocket parks or something. But, but in the absence of that, it's, they've, they're effectively just wards of the state, of the city, rather. But, and then we can continue to hound Bell County to do what, to do what, what they can to get rid of some of these properties. Most of these, they're just not interested in. It's, we've given them multiple opportunities, but they haven't moved on them. The water meter replacement program, this is a new, relatively new program. It's the, we've installed the first 5,000 of the new digital meters out of 50, 50, I think it's up to 57 plus now, total meters. And then, so, so we're taking a very conservative approach to the program, which is not bad. It's, we're, we're using available funds in the CIP, but it's a very, it's a very, it's a very long arc that goes into, it's going to be FY 33 probably at the soonest that where we get everything, everything swapped out. And other, most other cities are taking a far more aggressive approach. Now, they're taking on debt to do that, so that's the downside of it. But there are benefits to the program. There are, we're losing revenue from the old water meters, about 2 million annually from across the, across the city. And, and early leak, leak detection is, is a huge thing. It's going to allow us to save water and, and that'll, that'll save water for the residents as well. But, so it's a, it's a, it's a trade-off. I've suggested that we look into maybe seeing if there's some kind of a happy medium where we could, we can take on, there are, I think there are grants, there are possible grants available where we could pursue those that would not require us to take on debt, but still increase the pace of the program. So anyway, that's the, the water meter replacement program. The KCCC just released this mixed beverage operation. This is a mandated audit. It's required in the contract. The, like I said, I like movie references. But the, so the objectives were to review the status of corrective actions on prior reports and then determine the financial performance during the review and assess the contractor's inventory management performance. So the, so the operation has actually snapped back pretty good. The, they were down to 78,000 in the COVID year, the first year of COVID, FY 2020. So they got, they got hit pretty hard by that. They've actually come back pretty good. They, this is, this is about where, this is about as high as they get in the 250-plus range. The, there are issues with inventory management. The monthly inventory sheets were a bit of a mess. They have gotten better. That finance has worked with KCCC in implementing a new inventory spreadsheet, but the ones we looked at were, it just, the numbers were just not, were just not reliable. But, so that was an issue. And this is kind of one of their main responsibilities, is managing the inventory. And then overstocking was a problem as well. The, just in looking at the industry standards, you don't want to tie up a lot of money in inventory, and especially if it's something like beer where it's semi, the, what's the term? The perishable. Thank you. Thank you. They say it doesn't go bad, but it doesn't taste great. It gets, it gets stale after a while. And so you don't want, and we had in some cases, we had like, you know, two-year supply of some beers in there. So it's, that's not somewhere you want to be. The, and, and it just taking, it, it takes somewhere, it's inefficient, it takes a long time to do the inventory. It, it raises the risk of loss through damage or theft. You're going to, you're less likely to notice a bottle missing amongst 40 bottles than, than amongst 10. So, so just my recommendation was that they, that they just adhere. They, and the, the contract requires that, for them to, to operate in accordance with the standards of, of top-notch operations. So that was the, the KCCC. And again, these were the recommendations, implement inventory maintenance in accordance with best practice, and then establish a policy for following up. Like I said, in the inventories we looked at, there were wild shortages that, that were, for the, for the most part, they were mathematical errors. But, but they should still be followed up on. So we recommended that they establish a policy for following up and resolving these unexplained losses before moving on. And then reduce the spirits in inventory. They got a lot of, a lot of double, triple, quadruple types of liquor on board. I, I don't, I don't drink coconut rum, but they had like three or four different brands of it. I'm not sure how many you need. But the, okay, so then a follow-up. So I've done a few audits, said I've been here, since I've been here. And so I go regularly, I follow up with, with department directors to see what the status is on, on the prior recommendations, to see whether they've been implemented. So one of those was KVI. So this was a special request by City Manager Olson back in the day, where there was some, there were a lot of frustration with going on in the KVI at the time. The city was kind of pulling back. It was, it was created as a, as a nonprofit, and it kind of, it kind of morphed into almost adjunct of the city, where you kind of couldn't tell where KVI started and the city, and the city ended. So it was, it was a little messy. The, so this, so the city pulled back from it and, and it caused a lot of frustration among the volunteers because you had city staff there that were, that were calling the shots and suddenly they were gone. And so there was, there was a whole lot of frustration at the time. Mr. Olson asked me to look at it. So, so my recommendation was, well, this was created as a separate entity, and we needed to treat it like a separate entity and come up with, we had never really defined our relationship with it. And so it said, we need to establish some kind of a memorandum of understanding as to what it is we expect of it and what they expect of us. And so that is nearing completion, from what I'm told, which is nice. And the, so developer fees, it just did last year. So the issue with the developer fees, this was mostly the land disturbance fee, this is the engineering fees, land disturbance and construction plan review. A lot of them were falling through the cracks. And because they didn't have a process really in place for collecting them. So since that time, they've, they've folded these, these engineering fees, land disturbance and construction plan review into the, my permit now, the MGO connect. So now... So now you have to... The developers have to go online. They can't go forward until they've paid their fees online, which has made a big difference. Animal services, reviewed them last year. They... So they've got their... And looking at their... The agreement, intergovernmental agreement with Fort Cavesos. So at the time, they had... They had... All the trucks were kind of on back order. They hadn't received them. They have since received all their animal control trucks. Looking at their performance measures, they have improved marginally, but they have improved. The live release rate is still stubbornly low. It is higher than it was, but it's still not where we want it to be. They do have... They have launched a dedicated Facebook page. And that's something that Animal Advisory Committee has been advocating for for years. So that was a big one. The... And then accounts payable. The vendor master file looked at there was... Had thousands and thousands of old inactive vendors in the file. And that creates a risk that they can be used for fraudulent purposes. So check with the... Just visited the executive director. And so we're moving over to the new system, the Open Gov. And they have... They're cleaning up the file in that process. And it also has some nice... Some nice bells and whistles that will alert us to when inactive files reach a certain point. And we need to decide whether to inactivate them or redo them. Okay, and then so audits in progress. The... So we've got... We're starting up some new ones here. The CDBG grant award process. Looking at how that whole process works and make sure we're getting... Get the word out to everybody and we're being as efficient as possible. And the federal and state seizure funds that we get for the police department. Just that's a fairly routine type of audit. That... Other coming attractions. We got the street maintenance fee coming up. This one's going to concentrate on reconstructive efforts. The control over small assets. This is laptops, phones, tablets, those kind of things. The short-term rental program. The... Where they would see... We'll see how... That's a relatively new program. We got to see how that's working. And warming and cooling stations. Looking at our policies and how well we get the word out to the affected populations. The tourist fund, and then the Stone Tree Golf Course. And this is a funny thing. Okay, so this is just self-serving. The funny thing about audits, they... First, you hate them, then you get used to them. Enough time passes, they become indispensable. It's from Shawshank, by the way. That's... He was talking about walls, not audits. But okay. And that concludes my second annual year in review.
Thank you very much, Mr. Grady. There are no questions for you because we will be going behind closed doors to do your evaluation.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
So... Conduct Annual Evaluation of the City Auditor. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Law, VTC, a Government Code 551.001, the mayor now calls the closed meeting of the City Council on the 21st day of January 2025 at 5:12 PM. Under the following authority, Section 551.074 Personnel Matters, the City Council will conduct a City Auditor Annual Review. Public discussion of this matter will not be in the best interest of the city. Agenda item DS-25-002. We will adjourn and go into closed meeting. I am calling the meeting back to order. And it is 5:45 PM. We came out of closed session. So for RS-25-015, the council agreed Mr. Grady has exceeded expectation and will be receiving a 4% COLA raise. Thank you for that words. So could I get a motion to approve RS-25-015 with Mr. Grady receiving a COLA raise of 4%? Council, Mayor Proton?
Madam, I move to approve RS-25-015, authorizing Mr. Grady a 4%...
4% COLA.
4% COLA raise. Increase or raise.
Councilmember Boyd?
Second.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Can I get the motion carries six to zero? Can I get a motion to adjourn? Council, Mayor Proton?
I make a motion to adjourn, madam.
Councilmember Boyd?
Second.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no.
Yes.
All right, meeting adjourned.